We have a full house tonight. Everybody in their bright shiny cheerleading outfits and all the parents and coaches were so excited. And golf represented. We've got a lot of good things happening tonight, so we're so excited for y'all to be here. I'm opening the Board of Commissioners regular meeting, November 16th, 2023, at 7:00 PM. Ms. Jones, can you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Hall.
President.
Commissioner Johnson.
President.
Vice Mayor Butler.
President.
Mayor Anderson.
President. Item number three is prayer and pledge. If everyone would stand. Vice Mayor Butler.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support. As we begin this meeting, help us engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of our community. Amen.
Amen. Wow, can y'all come every week? That was amazing. I like that. Item number four is mayor's comments. I want to thank Sergeant Hill outside for running our metal detector, and Officer Meadows and Detective Reed for keeping us safe tonight. And I just want to welcome all the parents, coaches, and cheerleaders here tonight. And we've got representative of golf and coaches, and County Commissioner Ricky Jones is one of the coaches, so we welcome you and glad you're here tonight. So with that, we'll get started with, before we approve the agenda, I would like to add under awards and recognition, recognition of the major, minor, and Pee-wee of Fairview Titan Cheerleaders. And I would like to add, I'm going to put this one first before the cheerleaders. We'll recognize Matthew Coleman for regionals in high school golf. And then I'd also like to add the site development agreement for Otter Creek Phase Three. That will go under new business, item 11E.
Move for approval. Second.
Ms. Jones.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Item number five is approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Ms. Jones.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye. Item five passes 4-0. Item number six, citizens' comments.
One tonight, Mayor, Mr. Chris Butler.
Principal Butler.
Well, when I was coming tonight, I didn't realize it would be a big crowd, so indulge me here for one second. So I'd love to see all the future Yellow Jackets in this crowd tonight. I'm here to speak, I live at 1034 Braden Drive in Cumberland Estates subdivision. Back in April of 2022, I spoke in front of the board as well about the need for some traffic calming in our neighborhood. I have an eight-year-old son, and at any given time during the afternoon, I could have a wiffle ball game, a kickball game, a football game, where 10 to 12 young people that are just like this are out in the crowd. And unfortunately, as our subdivision grows, the amount of traffic increases and the speed increases. And research shows the faster cars go, if there is an accident, heaven forbid someone get hurt, the chances of that being fatal are extremely high in those of children. And so I just want to come to the board once again. I know at one point, they did a traffic calming study, and I think there were some changes, and I just would ask the city kind of put that high on their priority list, like I said, back in April of 2022. Unfortunately, I feel like it's a ticking time bomb where one kid accidentally hits the ball into the road really quickly, and just being an eight-year-old or nine-year-old is going to run out really quickly, and unfortunately, a tragedy could happen in our community, and I would hate for that to happen, for us not to address that issue at hand. Also, I think anything from stop signs to, I also did research about 3D paintings onto the road as well, or just unique ways, I know speed bumps and things of that nature may not be any feasible, but I just wanted to come speak in front of the board and just ask that the city kind of put that high on their priority list, not only in our subdivision as we get more developments. I think that's something that we need to ask our developers to look at, just to keep our children safe. So thank you, guys.
Thank you. Item number seven, public announcements, awards, and recognition. First, we'll do the city events.
Thank you, Mayor. Richard wanted me to remind everyone that he's still accepting applications for the Christmas Parade. That will be on Saturday, December 2nd at 10:00 AM. There's also a tour of the Historical Village, and there will be pictures with Santa on Saturday, December 2nd, from 12 to 4:00 PM. Also, the Christmas tree lighting will be from 4:00 to 5:00 PM on Saturday, December 2nd as well. So I didn't realize this, but so we're having pictures with Santa at Historical Village from 12 to 4:00, and then we're having pictures with Santa at the Nature Center on Monday night, December 4th, from 5:00 to 8:00. I believe these are free, so if you want pictures with Santa, those are two options. Thank you.
Thank you. Pictures with Santa. All right. Okay, so our first recognition we would like to do is Matthew Coleman of the Fairview High School. We're recognizing him for winning regionals in golf. Would his coaches and family like to come up? And I'd like the coaches to, congratulations, Matthew, and I'd like the coaches to give a little just detail about Matthew's career and what he's doing with golf at the high school.
Matthew is the third golfer in Fairview history to win the region. He is the youngest golfer to win the region in Fairview history. He went to the state, and we're expecting a lot of good things out of Matthew his junior and senior year. He told me he could do much better at the state, and we're looking forward to that. But Matthew, he hits the ball as hard as I've ever seen any golfer. I have pictures of him, I told him that I've got pictures of him completely in the air when he's hitting the golf ball, but he clobbers the ball, and he's one of the best ones we have, and we're expecting a lot out of Matthew. Coach Bruce here has worked with Matthew extensively and does an amazing job. So any of you young ladies and any young men, golf's a great, great sport, and we'd ask for you guys to come out and grab you some clubs besides cheerleading pom-poms and join us in a few years. Coach Bruce, you want to say something?
I'd just like to say how much of an honor it's been coaching you the last two seasons, Matthew, but he works very hard at what he does, and we've had a lot of coaching and playing sessions, and some of them are pretty stiff, I know you know what I mean, Stuart, but he's every golf coach's dream. Big, strong, good head for the game, hits a four iron 250 yards, I mean, I won't tell you what he hits his driver, but congratulations.
Let's give Matthew a big round of applause. Okay, we're going to do a picture. So we'd like to do a picture, we're going to have the coaches and the parents, any family members just come up front. If we could just for a second move the cheerleading trophy so it doesn't look like Matthew won a cheerleading competition. Rachel, would you mind?
Will we stand up here?
Yeah, we're going to stand up here. Just shoot us, yeah, just with us in the background and Matthew, yes.
Oh, here's another one. How was he on the course?
Okay, so we have a lot of young ladies and families here tonight, so I think what we're going to do is separate it into Pee-wees, minors, and majors so that we can do the picture and get everybody in. So I have to say, we had a mayor here a couple terms ago, you may know her, her name's Patty Carroll, and I just have to say a little bit about this. Patty and I actually coached the cheerleading squad, the minor cheerleading squad, back when they were called the Fairview Raiders, so this has been a long time ago, long time ago. And I know how hard all of you girls and the coaches have worked because we were every day at it for hours and hours getting ready for our Super Bowl, which is your cheerleading competition, is your Super Bowl. So it's real exciting to have y'all here tonight and just to recognize your achievement. And I'm going to have the coaches come up and tell a little bit about the teams and, you know, about this experience. So if we could start with the Pee-wees and have the Pee-wee coaches come up and speak a little bit, and then we'll have the girls come up, and any family members will do pictures. And just tell us who you are.
Okay. My name's Jennifer Ward, I'm the director for the Titans program. I also coach the Pee-wees, so I'll talk a little bit about them. I have Jennifer, Rebecca, Beth, and April, I always forget April, sorry, she's so quiet. They're our coaches, and they've worked extremely hard this year with the girls. Chris Butler actually let us perform at the Friday night football game for the playoff game, which took our jitters out for a competition on Saturday. But these girls work three days a week, two hours a day, they cheer on Saturdays, and it's three months of hardcore cheer, and for them to be five, six, and seven years old, I think they do an awesome job of, you know, learning their routines, working hard, showing up for practice, being dedicated to their team, being good teammates, so I'm extremely proud of all of them. So, congratulations, girls. Oh, one more thing. And so I forgot to add that they went against 16 different teams for the Pee-wee division, and so they placed second place. Mind you, it's not first place, but Titans has been a long time coming for a trophy, so we're proud of second place.
And let me tell you, I remember those days, and, you know, Fairview didn't place a whole lot back then when we were, when we were coaching, so to come in second out of 16 teams, I mean, that is a huge accomplishment. We're so proud of you girls. So, yeah, let's give them a round of applause.
All right, girls, can I get y'all to go behind?
And if y'all would like to just come up and, you know, kind of taller ones in the back, and then on down so we can get a picture of everybody.
One more thing I want to add is we do spirit sticks for our girls, the ones who work extremely hard, the ones who, you know, they're good leaders, they, we don't have to like get on to them and call their name the whole time at practice, they're good teammates and they try really hard. So we were short a spirit stick the other day, so today I'd like to award one to one of our cheerleaders that's worked very hard, and her name is Addison.
All right.
(Inaudible).
Yeah, we're going to give the girls the mic so that they can introduce themselves.
Girls, all I want you to do is say your names, shake your palm, and walk to the back, okay? Who wants to go? Where's Charlotte? Come here, Charlotte. Hey, Charlotte McDonald, wave your palm and go to the back. Ready?
Charlotte McDonald.
Hannah Jones.
Riley Stately.
I'm Addison Cecario.
Ellen Butler.
Lily Grace.
Morgan Campbell.
Demi Wu.
Elena Mitchell.
Elena Mitchell.
Ivy Gillespie.
Madeline Evans.
Lakey Buh.
Emery D.
Ryland Smith.
All right. Yay. Congratulations, girls.
Can I have one of our minor coaches, Sarah, Valerie?
Okay, so next we'll do the minor coaches and the minor team.
I'm like, I know we have a few minors at Westwood, they're in the choir, they're not going to make it, it's okay.
Yeah, we have some that are out.
I couldn't take them away from their Veterans Day songs. If you guys want to just stand over here.
Oh, that, trust me, I know about that.
My name's Sarah Rains, I'm born and raised here, have been with the Titans program since about 2008, kind of left after I had my daughter, and then came back three years ago when Jennifer had taken over. It's been an awesome opportunity to coach these girls. Last year I was with the majors, we got cheated out of a placement, so this was revenge. But couldn't be more proud of this team. There are so many that are not here tonight. I got to work alongside Lacey and Val and Coach Hannah, which, prayers for her daughter she got admitted to the hospital. But it is a lot, three days is a lot. Last week was a lot on top of everything else. Weather is never in our favor at all. But these kids, they come with a smile, some come with frowns, but they'll leave with a smile. And overall, it's just about making it fun, letting them make friends, it really allows them to get to know kids from the other schools, because some are Westwood, some are Fairview, and some are Burns and everywhere else. But as your coach, I am overly proud, and this is amazing. This has never happened since I've ever coached before, just the fact of being here at the City Hall, being recognized for your amazing hard work.
Yeah, that's all of what Sarah said, and I'll say it takes a lot for 22 girls to come together, get all their motions together, all their jumps, all their timing, all of the things, and they did it and they killed it, and, you know, we did, we were cheated out of some practices because of weather and such, but they're resilient that way, and they just came up and they did it, so, super proud.
Let's give these girls a round of applause. Okay, so we'll do the pictures and then we'll let y'all say your names, okay? Oh, they're giving them the pom-poms. Oh, that's cute. All right, so, let the girls say your names. Up your palms here, but say your names.
Willow Mason.
Ellie Mayhew.
Morgan Shiroki.
Callie Brown.
Madeline Campbell.
Emery Butler.
Aria Hall.
Jolie Fry.
Grace Smith.
Beverly Glass.
Addison Gunnel.
Coach Sarah. All right, congratulations, minor cheerleaders. Okay, can we have our majors up here, please? All right, so majors come up and major coaches.
Look, if we need to move these trophies up, because y'all have a lot here. So I'm going to say something before they come up, so this same group of coaches here actually won first place last year at Cheer Comp, so they moved up to our majors, but this group right here did bring home first place last year.
That's awesome.
With half these girls. Anything else?
You have a shy group of coaches, as much as we like to yell at these girls, we actually don't like to talk in person in large groups. But I'm teasing, but we just want to say these girls are amazing, this is the second year I've coached this group, was minors last year, half of them moved up. Yeah. And just did a great job this year, we are so proud of all of your efforts and could not be more excited for you all to bring home these lovely trophies. I'll let the other coaches introduce themselves, and if y'all want to say anything, you can.
I'm Erica Omandi, and this is my second year with them too, and I'm just proud of their growth, the hard things we had them do, the hard things we pushed them to do every day, and they grumbled sometimes, but most of the time they were very excited to try them, so we are so proud of them and the work they put in this year.
My name is Samantha Hamby, this is actually my first year, I'm more of what we call the supportive coach. And I'm very, very proud of all the efforts they put in, again, as much as we were yelling and screaming, I'm glad it paid off.
I'm Angela Campbell, yeah, we don't really like talking in front of adults, give me children all day long and I will talk, and it's great. But it's funny that Sam says that, Sam is the one that worked with all of our dancers and came up with all of the dances in our routine, so Sam was not just supportive, but did an awesome job with our routine. But, so anyway, yeah, this is my second year with this group, half of the group, just very proud of all of them. I can be quite the drill sergeant at times, and they were wonderful and awesome, and we are very proud. And one thing that I wanted to mention is when we were doing our halftime routine, which I was a Fairview Jacket, so I was a cheerleader, and so proud to be able to watch the girls go out there and do what we used to do on that field. What the high school girls were standing behind us, and our girls are amazing stunters. So the stunting is where, you know, you throw the girls up and you lift them up and all that stuff, so, and they twist. We had a full down where you twist down and you catch them from an extension, which is all the way up, and the high school girls were behind us, and they said, oh my gosh, we can't, we don't do that. So for us, that was really cool that the high school girls were just kind of in awe of our, you know, 10, 11, and 12, 13-year-old girls, and so I thought that was really neat. And they even tried some of our stunts after we left. So anyway, girls, we are so incredibly proud of you, and we love each and every one of you.
Girls, good job, all the way around, say your names, and then you can head out to the back. Can y'all, when you go take the pom-poms, I'm parked right from the sidewalk, and we'll just stick them in my car? Okay. Who's going first? All right, we're ready. Oh, we going first? Okay.
I'm Rosa Glass.
I'm Ivy Pillage.
Harper Hamby.
Kiana Omandi.
Lacey Chandler.
Peyton Campbell.
Savannah Vandra.
Paisley O'Neil.
Skylie Bateman.
Ava Campbell.
Really Goodwin.
Jaycee Hardiman.
Kennedy Brown.
Josie Howell.
Aubrey Mangan.
McKinley.
Congratulations, girls. I want to, I want to say one more thing before y'all leave. I did want to thank Coach Butler for, I have to call him coach, I know he's principal, but he's always coached me, for allowing the girls to participate in the halftime show because right now during this time of year, we have so many things that are going on on the weekends. We had the veterans' celebration, which I was involved in, and I like to be at everything, but you know you can't do that. So that gave some of us who were involved in that the opportunity to see the girls do their program, which was so exciting to me. I got, I was so excited to be able to see it since I wasn't going to be able to be there, and I know a lot of other people got to experience the same thing. Plus, that was, whoever brought it up, I think you brought it up, that it was a good opportunity for the girls to be able to practice in front of a big crowd, so I hope they continue with that. And also, we also want to remember that our Pee-wee Titans football players have their Super Bowl this weekend, so let's all go, you know, try to, try to support them as they do that. We want any teams, any individuals, whether it be academics, sports, this is not just a board that wants to vote on developments or not development, we want our community to be able to be recognized and for every accomplishment they make, whether it be academic or sports. So if there's anything going on, we can't be aware of everything, please let us know so that we can, you know, support our children, because I think it's important for all of them to, you know, feel important, and this is, this is a really great, great way to do it. So thank you all for coming. You're welcome to stay for the meeting, but if, if not, you know. Thank you. You're welcome to stay for the meeting, but if, if not, you know.
Thank you.
Okay, item number eight, staff comments and monthly reports. A, community services report.
Good evening, Board. Good evening, crowd. It's gotten much smaller in the last 10 minutes. The Fairview Street Department, Public Works, they completed the chipper service for the month and a season total of 15 truckloads for the month. Replaced numerous street and stop signs throughout the city. Patched numerous potholes throughout the city. Picked up trash along Highway 196, total of 16 bags. Built the basketball court pad at Veterans Lake Park. They bush hogged around the lake and the trails at Veterans Park. They cleaned up numerous spots throughout the city from graffiti on the street and on stop signs in particular. And they finished the lawn care for the season at the fire hall on the Public Works ground. For the Planning and Codes Department, we issued six residential building permits this month. Uh, I would expect to see a, a large increase over the next month as Adams Preserve picks up. They have submitted all of their building permits at one time for their entire development.
Hold on just a second. That's mine. That, that's mine. Go ahead. It's mine. Sorry.
So, as Adams Preserve, um, moves forward in their construction process, I expect to see those permits issued by the end of, end of the year, um, which is a fairly large project. It's the one that's going in behind Sonic. We issued two signed permits and one non-residential building permit. As a department, we're looking at new locations to place stop signs throughout the city. We've had multiple concerns from citizens requesting assistance in slowing traffic speeds in neighborhoods, as you heard tonight from our citizens' comments. Cumberland Estates is one of those neighborhoods that we were looking at. There are also a few others throughout the, the city. A Planning Commission update on Tuesday, um, this, Tuesday night of this week, uh, the Planning Commission, we had a few developments that were on the agenda. We had an ACE hardware that was approved, um, Brush Creek subdivision that was approved, and Phase Three and Four of Otter Creek that was approved. To follow up with our urban growth boundary update, uh, the Williamson County Coordinating Committee held two public hearings over the last two weeks. The mayor and I have both attended those. We've had no negative comments towards the Fairview Urban Growth Boundary. The next Williamson County Coordinating Committee meeting will be held Tuesday, November 21st at 9:00 a.m. The meeting will be held at the Williamson County Enrichment Center located at 110 Everbright Avenue in Franklin, Tennessee. In that meeting, the committee will be asked to vote on the proposal for the urban growth boundaries of each municipality across the county. If you have any questions, free to answer.
Ethan, uh, do we still offer free bags for the leaves?
We do. They can come into my office at 7111 Bowie Lake Road. And we have them out front for them to pick up. And if there aren't any out front, we've had several people here recently have come in and snagged them without us even knowing, but if they aren't, if there aren't any out front, ring the bell, and we have planning to hand out for everyone. As a reminder for citizens, 10 leaf bags a month is what they have available for pickup with our Public Works Group.
Now, let the gentleman know that called me today. One other question, do we still have the traffic signs that we love our children with the, with the red heart on it?
I will have to look.
That was a very...
And I'll, I'll check it into...
It's eye-catching, and it would be one that would be noticeable, and I'd love to see that. As y'all know, I've checked, asked for the last three meetings about extra patrol in, in Cumberland Estates, and, you know, I do see the problem myself, and, uh, my wife lets me know about it, too.
I'll check with Public Works about our signs, and, uh, and we'll make sure that we get those out there.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Eight B is Police Department Report. Welcome, Detective Reed.
So, staffing is going to be the same as, for in October, going to be the same, 25 and 25 overtime. For September was 77.5, and then October was 81. Training hours is down in October. Some of the things that consist of that were basic in-service, crime scene operations, firearms instructor, less lethal instructor, and regional drug trends. Next. Calls for service has increased for September compared to October, being 1,320. Next. So, for domestics, uh, we're going to be up one. Wives are down five. Drug charges is 35 for October, and September is 62. Theft for September was three, and October is five. Our citations for September, 153, and October is 115. Property damage, 23 for September and 20 for October. Injury, three for September, one for October, and none for fatalities both September and October. Some of the public relations that we did for the trunk or treat, we set up a booth, and you can see Officer Vander Napp and Cody Hargrove, Officer Cody Hargrove, he's the one that's in the stripes there. But, we had a good time. It went really well. We raised $900 for the program, which is exciting. We also had the best candy. We had realistic marshmallow eyeballs, which the kids loved.
Yes.
Questions?
That when you bit into them, goo came out.
Oh, yeah, it was, I mean, adults thought it was nasty, but kids loved it.
Thank you. Item eight C, Fire Department Report. Chief Hughes.
Mayor Commissioners, for the month of October, uh, we ran a total of 135 emergency calls. Again, we're, we're up, uh, for the year significantly. I think we checked today, we, we've run more calls, uh, currently this year than we ran all next year, all of last year. So, still got a month and a half to go. In October, we had 22 overlapping call incidents. Again, that's when one crew's, um, still on a call and another call is dispatched. This continues to rise. We had five incidents where a fire was, had to be extinguished, uh, one rubbish fire in Hickman County, one burn pile in Williamson County, and one vehicle fire, uh, that caused a grass fire on I-40. And then we had one porch fire that was inside the city limits. We had four mutual aid or automatic aid responses to our surrounding jurisdiction. Our average response time, uh, was up a little bit at, uh, 5 minutes and 20. Again, that's from the time that we are dispatched until we check on-scene. Once we see the heat map, I'll show you what caused some of that. And then our time operating on-scene is down. Again, uh, that's just the type of calls that we're getting. If there, if there are more fires or more, um, traffic accidents that require us to be on-scene longer, that number tends to go up. Again, I want to let everyone know, if it is an emergency, please call 911. We're still getting a lot of calls, uh, for emergencies, uh, at the station. I'm not sure how to put that out anymore. We were putting it on social media, I think, uh, the city's putting it out, and it's in our report every month, but we still get a high number of emergency calls that comes, comes straight to the station. Uh, this is the breakdown, uh, for the calls in Oc, October. Again, uh, emergency, uh, and rescue calls, those all so fall, medical calls fall into that, uh, 69%, which is down. National average is running about 78%. So, as we have more fires and wrecks and things like that, that, uh, changes that percentage. Next, Keith. So, as you can see, the heat map, uh, those red dots are getting bigger, uh, out on the 96 corridor and even out toward the east of, um, Highway 100. And even the green and yellow ones are growing out on the east side and the 96 corridor. Our fire station is right there in the middle of the darker green area in Bowie Park where the majority of our calls, but when we're responding from there all the way out through the interstate, that's what drives that response time up. So, the more calls we get out there, that response time's going to go up, and, uh, we need to operate, uh, kind of under NFPA standards for 1720, and, uh, that says that we need to be on-scene four minutes from the time we leave the station. Speeding is not the answer, it's what we're doing now, and, uh, looking at station locations, once a station gets out on 96, that, uh, response time is going to come down significantly because we don't have those long runs out there that are eight, nine minutes that are bringing our average up. Keith? Next slide. Fire prevention activities, the Fire Marshal, uh, completed 38 fire and life safety inspections and follow-ups. Again, uh, all the businesses, uh, are doing a great job. Any corrective notices that we have to give them, they take care of them. He, uh, does another visit and usually, uh, signs off on their inspection. We had 16 pre-fire plans completed, and he, uh, loaded, uh, 70 hydrants into our RMS system, and that's just, uh, going out and getting la, laden laundry sheet on them so that they're on our maps on for response, so we know where those hydrants are as we're going to cause. Public education events, uh, we, uh, also, we're at the trunk or treat, uh, had, gave out a lot of candy. We had to go get reinforcements and get more candy. But, that's okay. We were, we thought we may have to, so we had it staged at the station, which is sometimes a bad idea because the firemen eat it all before the kids can get it. We'd had a lot of station tours, and then Fire Prevention Week was in October, so that resulted in several hundred interactions with, uh, kids at the schools and the daycares and coming by the station. Again, if any city residents need smoke detectors, uh, we have them at the station. All they have to do is call, we'll set up a time, and we come out and install those for them. So, if you know anybody that needs them, just have them call the station. Fire Marshal will set up a, a time to come out and install it for them. So, in October, we had, uh, 459 training hours, um, and there's the breakdown. We did, um, we had people in class, we had one member attend Fire Officer One, uh, one member, uh, attended Fire Officer Four. One of our members completed their live burn two, and then one of the members attended NFPA 1403 class. The 1403 class, uh, is an instructor-level class that allows, uh, that person to, um, to teach in, in the live fire training scenarios we do in our new training tower. Uh, we, we do not, uh, do any training that's live fire unless it's 1403 compliant, and we have to have the instructors there. They have to do a lot of math and make sure that we have enough water on scene to put out a fire in case it gets out of hand in training, and, and they are there, uh, watching the scenarios and make sure we're safe. Uh, we completed, uh, the, the park-wide, uh, cancer screens that are, uh, now mandated by the state. We, uh, all have to go through them every year. We had fit testing and F-CBA competence, and then our a, annual multi-jurisdictional water shuttle, and that's when we operate with some of the departments around, uh, the city that we respond to, uh, often, and they respond end off in, uh, in areas that don't have hydrants, so they're not as fortunate as Fairview where we have a decent hydrant system. When we respond out in the county, we may not have a hydrant for a couple miles, and we have to build a shuttle enough water to put out a, a fire. So, we practice with that, uh, we make sure we can communicate with those jurisdictions through our radio system, and they understand our capabilities, and we understand theirs. We also had, um, Hazmat 3 come out from Franklin Fire, uh, for three days, and, uh, we set up their mass decon training, uh, in case we ever have a, uh, a situation where we have to do some mass decon. They have, uh, the resources, we know how to ask for it, and they will be on the road, and we know how to set it up for them. I think that's it for the report. Is there any questions? Sorry, um, do you need to mention there is still a burn ban? We had several calls today. The State Commissioner on Agriculture actually enacted one for all of Williamson County, um, on Friday. He is the only person who can do that on the unincorporated areas. The city had one prior to that, and it is still in effect, um, but I think we went on a couple of calls today that people were open burning now. Unfortunately, this current burn ban is recreational fires also. No fire pits unless they are gas fire pits and gas logs. Even if they're in a pit, you can't, uh, with the burn ban, it's still way too dry. Hopefully, we're going to get some rain, but, uh, I think we're six inches behind where we should be this year. Everything is super dry. We, uh, helped the county two weeks ago on 150-acre brush fire that just started from someone burning some trash.
And about leaves, you were saying that leaves are never allowed to be burned?
Leaves are never allowed to be burned in Fairview by ordinance, uh, and you have to have a burn permit to burn anything. We have to come down to the Fire Department, fill out, we come and make sure that what you're burning is acceptable, but leaves are never something that, that you can burn in the city, even if you had a permit.
Anything else? Thank you. Item eight D, Finance Report. Mr. Darty?
Thank you, Mayor. Board, um, you should have in your packet, um, the first two pages are the city accounts and balances. On the first one, it's about two weeks past, uh, it's in November. On the, um, the, um, reserves statement, that is for, um, October 31st. So, that's the first two pages. Then your next report is your, just your, uh, Department Board of Commissioners Detail Budget. And then, uh, the, the last part is a summary, uh, it details revenues, uh, and then it, it, um, summarizes by, uh, department the expenditures as, as total. That, any, as stated always, any questions about finances, feel free to, to call, um, ask Ben, ask me. We're, uh, healthy, we're, we're, um, I believe we're going to be able to meet all of our obligations and then some. So, thank you.
Thank you. Item eight E, City Manager Report. Mr. Darty?
Thank you. We don't have a lot to report on. We're, a lot of the departments use the fall to, uh, get all their training obligations, uh, taken care of, and, and prep. Believe it or not, we're, we're pretty into, uh, amended budget preparation. Hope to get that to you guys in, uh, January. I know it'll take two readings. Then, uh, we're also looking, uh, looking at one to five-year capital plan, um, just trying to gear up, trying to gear up to get, uh, some traction on projects, hopefully get some, um, American Rescue Plan funds, uh, finished up as quickly as we can, this, and then, uh, start paving roads as quickly as we can. But, uh, there's going to be a lot of, uh, a lot of activity. It's just, um, um, it seems like it's not right now, but it takes a lot of prep work to get that going. But, um, always a lot going on. Um, I can't say enough about our staff.
But always a lot going on. I can't say enough about our staff. I do want to mention Parks. I know they had an interview for Naturalists today. I think we're also looking to hire another maintenance worker. I think they're having some interview for one fire department position in the next week or so. So we're pretty close on staff. So, but we've got a few holes to fill. But other than that, just business as usual.
Is the police department full on staff?
Yes. I believe they just hired Detective Reed. Did I am correct on that statement?
Oh, we just hired two more.
I think the community and citizens will be excited about us getting started paving roads in the spring. I get asked about that a lot, so that's exciting news that we will see some roads paving started. So, is that all? Any other questions? I'm going to go ahead with item nine, but I would like to wait until Commissioner Hall comes back before we start with item 10. Item nine is Consent Agenda. A. Minutes from November 2nd, 2023, Board of Commissioner Regular Meeting.
Move to approve.
Ms. Jones?
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Of course. We wouldn't do it without you. Well, we understand. That's okay. Item number 10, Old Business. A. Annexation 7114, Elrod Road. We will open the public hearing.
Well, good evening. My name's Megan Gear with Collins Legal and I'm here on behalf of Jeff Pape and Tammy Hyler. Regrettably, they were not able to be here due to a trip that they had planned and paid for several months prior to submitting their application. Nevertheless, they are watching on the live feed. And in regards to the application, they wanted me to ask, or they wanted me to really, I can't even say the word. They wanted me to remind you that they have no plans for further development or subdividing the property and that the application is purely to allow them to become voting citizens of the city and then eligible to also be on the city's boards and commissions. So today, they have no issue with you approving their application despite their absence. And if there's any questions you have for me at this time, I am in contact with them, so I'm happy to answer.
Okay. We'll do that after the public hearing's over.
Oh, I apologize. Did I get too early?
No, that's okay. You can, you can talk during the public hearing.
Sorry.
That's okay. Anyone else to speak during the public hearing? All right. We will close the public hearing. Item 10A2, Resolution 68-23, A Resolution to Annex Certain Territory Upon Written Consent of the Owners and to Incorporate the Same Within the Boundaries of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, With RS40 Single Family Residential Zoning, MAP 021, Parcel 022.08, 7114 Elrod Road, 6.21 acres. Owners, Tammy J. Hyler and Jeffrey Pape. Move for approval. Okay. This property is contiguous on two sides, two city property. The driveway connects to a city street and with no development plans, only voter rights and the opportunity to run for office. That is the reason I voted for approval on this. There, Ethan, if you'd like to say anything about this from the staff standpoint?
Our staff recommendation to the Planning Commission and the Planning Commission's recommendation to this board was in favor of annexing this property to speak to the same points that the mayor just spoke. Elrod Road, where this parcel is accessed from, is a city-maintained street. We maintain that at the screen that you're looking at where the yellow touches Elrod Road. The far left-hand corner, we maintain up until that point. Their access point is about where it says road in Elrod Road. They are accessed from an access easement back to their parcel and they are contiguous with the current municipal limits.
And I apologize, I forgot your name?
Megan Gear.
Okay. If you'll just come forward if anybody has any questions, since you're the representative today for the-
Yeah, got a little ahead of myself.
Pape and Hyler. Does anybody from the board have any questions?
Mayor, I'll just ask one question for discussion.
Yeah.
And we hit on a little bit for the Planning Commission. But we have a subdivision regulation that says, "In any instance where a permanent easement is used to provide access to a lot or tract of land having been or being separated by deed or plan from other property, such easement shall be at least 50 feet. Where a permanent easement is proposed to provide access to more than one lot or tract of land, an accessway shall be constructed within the easement, which will meet or exceed the standards for designing construction of public ways." So it's, this doesn't have 50-foot easement. It doesn't have the improved road. And so the only, I bring this up for conversation and feedback, but about a year or two ago, we had a city of Fairview property come to the Planning Commission trying to do something similar with the 50-foot access easement. Had to come to the commission three different times and had a very difficult time trying to obtain access. And so I guess from a staffer or a legal standpoint, is it proper to annex a non-conforming lot, so to speak, that, that doesn't, that doesn't have, doesn't meet their subdivision regulations to start? And so, does it set a bad standard of precedent?
It's eligible for annexation. However, that would be a rational reason to deny annexation if you were to vote no. If you were to annex it, it would become, it would be admitted as a grandfathered, non-conforming lot. So no, no problem annexing it. It'd be a legal annexation, but that could be a rational basis not to annex it. And I'll remind you that your duty as a board, you're sitting as a quasi judicial body today. So if you, when you make your decision, it should be based on a rational basis. It cannot be arbitrary or capricious. If you are planning on voting no, you should state your reason, your rational reason. What you look at on an annexation is you look at the 2040 plan. You look at the cost of the city. You look at if the property were annexed, even though the Papes may not have plans to try to subdivide it or render services, they won't always own the property. So that would be fair to look at, whether it creates a burden on the city because if you view that there's no properties on the other side, that might be something you could look at. So, but your decision has to be rational. It can't be just, you like the property owner or you don't like the property owner. It would have to have a rational basis.
Yes, sir. Just to further extend it, have you ever seen a non-conforming annexation? Have you ever seen a community ask for it to be updated to conform? Have you say, you know, maybe our regulations would have been different back then anyway and we would have allowed it back. I don't know the date it was built or anything, but any feedback on that?
I don't have any feedback. I've seen annexations, I've seen annexation requests from landowners that, that have been permitted and their, you know, prior non-conforming use. I've also seen it as a reason why commissioners or councilmen may vote against an annexation. I think you can make your own decision about that.
You know, I reiterate what he said. My understanding is because it's an annexation application and not a subdivision application, the 50-foot easement does not apply in this instance. So in terms of, you know, he'd said that it would be grandfathered. Whether or not, it can change in the future, I don't know. But, you know, at this time, my understanding is it is in compliance and the 50-foot wide easement does not apply.
I understand that statement. I think what I struggle with is if a current citizen inside Fairview limits tried to design something like this, we would turn them down. They would be unable to obtain something like this. And so trying to just make sure we don't set a different precedent.
Ethan, would you speak to that? What Commissioner, what Vice Mayor Butler just spoke on? How would the city present that to the Planning Commission or this board if a current citizen came in, wanted to subdivide their property for their child to build a house and only had a 25-foot easement?
Precedent has been set in the past that they have to abide by our approved documents. And as Commissioner, Vice Mayor Butler stated, that has been the requirement of the city citizen that he is speaking of. And they abided by that and then they were approved at that point. And I would follow that same, that same line of thinking of, if Mr. Pape and Ms. Hyler chose to do something else with their property, it would have to come up to city standard and to be able to be divided in any way. It's a 5.33-acre lot and so coming into the city, not being in the county, it's currently zoned MGA 5, which is one house per five acres. And so coming into the city at RS40, that gives you the availability to have one house per acre. So if someone ever did purchase this from them and they chose to separate this into multiple lots, that easement would have to be in accordance with our documents.
It wouldn't be sufficient for further subdivision unless they purchased more property or had the easement widened. So they would have to, they would have to do something or they would need to seek relief through the Board of Zoning Appeals for a variance of some sort, which I don't think would be appropriate because they purchased the property knowing it had limited road frontage. But that's, that would be something I would tell the Board of Zoning Appeals. But again, that's not, again, I think it's a fair consideration to decide when you're sitting here, deciding whether you should annex the property in or not. But it, but it doesn't make annexation improper in and of itself. It just, it would just be a non-conforming lot in the city. And I'm sure we have other non-conforming lots in the city, but-
And if I could just add one thing, my clients understand that if they were to choose to subdivide in the future, that it would trigger additional standards that they would have to meet and, you know, adjusting the easement in order to do so. So they are aware of, you know, I mean, they don't have any plans to do that. However, I know there's been discussions previously about the easement, making sure that they're in compliance.
So on that, I would, I would try to divorce the owner from this discussion. Obviously, they're important because they come to the city asking for annexation. But what they want to do or what their intentions are, really, your job is to look in a much broader scope because this property will not always be owned by them. It may be owned by somebody different next year. And so whatever you do with this property, whether you annex it in, they may not be the owner in two or three years. So it shouldn't be about Mr. and Mrs. Pape or whether you like them or whether you don't like them because that would be arbitrary and capricious, right? That wouldn't be a rational reason. So you need to look at, you need to look at the situation in a broader sense. And I'm glad that the Papes have said that they don't have plans to do this or they're doing it just so they can contribute to the community and they don't plan to use services. But you have to understand that they may not always own the property. And so someone may purchase the property that may have a different idea about it. And so that's, I would urge you to look at it in the broad sense and not exactly what the, what the landowners are. In the same way that if someone were coming in for a rezone and they said, "Our intention is to, you know, only build one house every acre," but it's rezoned to a really high density. You know, that developer may not develop the property, may be sold to somebody else and they do something different. So whatever you do, do it in a rational, non-arbitrary and capricious manner.
Well, based on what you just said right then, then if we did annex it, we're annexing it in with, as a problem. And so I see that, I see that as the possibility of a future problem, which is like you said, they, they may decide that they want to go live somewhere else next year and sell it and then somebody else is coming in and then we've got to deal with it. And I know the night at the Planning Commission meeting, he said that he would get the, the extra 25-foot easement. He said it wouldn't be a problem. He'd already talked to the other property owners. And maybe, maybe that's what he needs to do before, before he comes back. I don't, I don't, I'm like you. I don't, I don't think this, it has anything to do with, with the two of them. I think it's the property itself. It doesn't meet the current code. And so I think that gives us reason to deny it.
But I want to, I want to be clear that if you, if you, if you did annex it, it would just be a non-conforming annexation. It's not, it doesn't make an illegal annexation. It's a proper annexation request.
It would just be an annexation that could be a future problem.
I think, I think one thing you said, there's probably non-conforming all over the city. So that adjusted my mindset a little bit. From a perception standpoint, if someone comes in two months to the Planning Commission meeting and said, "You annexed that property with 25 feet. You owe it to me." Do they have any warrant or argument, in your opinion? If so, if we were to approve it tonight, in two months, someone comes to the Planning Commission and says, "You annexed a piece with 25-foot easement," do they have any argument or merit to a standard of being set of allowing a smaller access point?
No, because this is not a request for a subdivision. So if they came for a request for a subdivision and then they were able to get a variance, which I think would be an improper variance because they wouldn't meet the four standards for a variance. I think granting a variance for them to do something with this limited easement would, would be problematic and would set. But, but I don't think, this is just an annexation. So again, you're sitting as a, as a judicial sort of body. And so I think that as long as you apply Fairview standards and you apply a rational basis to it, and I think different minds can feel differently about allowing in a non-conforming property. Like I, I think what Commissioner Johnson said, I think that's a very rational way to think. I think the way the mayor thinks about it, I think that a reasonable person could also come to that conclusion. And I think there's probably other conclusions you can reach to also. But this is, this is the kind of conversation that needs to be had before you exercise an annexation. So I'm glad that you're having it. It, it, it would be, as long as you do it for the right reasons, you could reach for or against. And so it's, it's not my job to tell you what you should do because I think rationally you could do either. And so it's, that's why it's good that you're having this conversation. And then you need to make up your own mind about how you feel about it.
If they sold the property and it was sold as a non-conforming piece of property, the person that bought it would understand that, right? Or should?
Well, it would have to, yes, it would be in the, it would have to be, it would be part of the chain of title. And so that would be a limitation that the buyer would then inherit or purchase. And so they would have the same, same limitation and have the same
I would also like to add that part of our staff report was that this is within our urban growth boundary. So that, just wanted that on record. And then it's also in our 2040 plan designated as rural settlement. And then it's also in our 2040 plan designated as rural settlement. And so RS 40 being an appropriate zone within the rural settlement category, which is what this property would be coming in zoned as for the city.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm done. I think it adjusted my position. Again, before we vote, I think it would be appropriate if you plan to vote no to state what your, state what your planned vote is and why you're going to vote, vote in that way. If you're going to vote to approve, I don't think you need to state your position. But if you plan to vote no, then I would urge you to state your position and why. So the rational basis is on the record.
I plan to vote no for the fact that it could present a future problem for the new property owners or the current property owners if they try to develop something for not having the.
I haven't asked for the vote yet.
Correct easement, so.
I haven't asked for the vote yet, so why don't you hold off until it's time to vote? Ethan, what was the recommendation from the Planning Commission?
The Planning Commission recommendation was to approve.
What was the vote on the last board meeting about this annexation?
Four, four zero for the public hearing.
Yes, the vote was for yes, zero, no, to approve, to have a public hearing and a second reading.
And I don't believe I heard anybody speak against it from the public. Anything else?
I think before you call, call the vote, I think it would be then appropriate to whoever plans to vote no to state their reason and then call the vote. We don't need to be having them vote and state the reason at the same time. So the vote should just be yes or no. So I just want to make sure we stand in the proper.
So you want us each one to explain and then vote?
Only, only those that plan to vote no because that's, that's where the potential liability is. The, the Papes are requesting it, so there won't be any liability if the city approves it. But if the city denies it, then I want the rational basis to be on the record. So that's why I'm saying if you plan to vote no, then state your rational basis, please, for the record. If you all plan to vote yes, then we can just move right to vote and, and we can be done with it. And that's, that's fine. But I'm, I'm trying to safeguard the city here and make sure that we have a proper vote and it's proper, properly considered. And if there's going to be a no vote, that the reason is on the record.
Anyone planning to vote no, please state your reasons.
You want to read mine back?
Commissioner Johnson is choosing to vote no due to it might cause future problems for the city or future owners of the property.
Due to the easement not being in compliance with the current zoning.
Anyone else? Ms. Jones?
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
No.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Item 10A passes three, one.
Could I make another statement or is it too late?
Well, we're on to the next item, so.
I just.
It's fine with me.
I'll see her after the meeting.
Commissioner Hall? Go ahead.
I was just going to urge them to go ahead and pursue the 25, other 25-foot easement.
Okay.
That's what I would like to see happen.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 11, new business. A, Resolution 69-23, a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between the City of Fairview Fire Department and Nashville Lumber Company, LLC, Fire Chief.
Mayor Commissioners, this is just a memorandum of understanding between the Fire Department and Nashville Lumber to allow us in cases of emergency that are caused by natural disasters or man-made disasters that we can access their property to get lumber that is needed to either shore things up or secure things. We've had, over the last two or three years, we've had several cars in the buildings that we were able to shore up, but we probably could have shored up even better. But we just don't carry, we don't have the ability to carry enough of shoring material for these type events. And we have talked with Nashville Lumber. They are in favor of this. We have it set out. I think Patrick reviewed it. And it basically just allows us, if we, if we have the need, we can contact them, let them know we have access to their lot through the NOC system. Our officer on duty would take account of everything that we took out. And then we would turn that into Nashville Lumber as soon as possible for them to invoice the city for those needs. We are not just going shopping every day. We're not stockpiling stuff. It's just, just in case of emergencies.
I have reviewed it. It's appropriate. It's, it's typical of what many cities have in the case of a tornado or a fire or some other emergency, especially if it's after hours. It allows them to get the wood and not have to try to store it at City Hall or at the Fire Department.
And we've never had the opportunity to have lumber in Fairview either. We'd have to go to another city to pick it up if we, if we truly needed it.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any questions of Chief Hughes? Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Thank you.
Item 11A passes four zero. Item 11B, Resolution 70-23, a resolution of the City of Fairview Board of Commissioners to name Resolution 71-23, a resolution of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, designating items and materials as surplus and authorizing their disposal.
I think we're, I think you read C.
I'm sorry.
Mayor.
Let's go back one. Item 11B, Resolution 70-23, a resolution of the City of Fairview Board of Commissioners to name a consultant for professional design services for Fairview Fire Station 32. Chief Hughes?
Board Commissioners, this was in our workshop this evening. The committee at the Fire Department that we've created, an internal committee, reviewed the six applicants that submitted in reference to our RFQ for the design services for Fire Station 32. We had a lot of discussions. The same two kept coming up to the top and we brought those in for in-person interviews. The Fire Department Committee for the Design Services would, would like to recommend that you guys approve to engage Renaissance Group as our design services and consultant for this project. We felt like they aligned with the city's kind of vision and need for this. They talked a lot about function and we feel like they have plenty of experience building fire stations. They've done the last two in Franklin, recent one in Columbia. They are engaged with Spring Hill right now to do their Fire Station Four. And we'd like to move forward. Again, this is in the budget for these services for this year. And this is just the next step in a long process to get Station 32 open.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Again, I've reviewed the agreement. It looks good. This is the proper process. Obviously, if it comes back as a $50 million fire station, then it's not worth pursuing. But it will give the city information in order to make a good decision on, on whether it's affordable and meets, meets the city's need.
I would like to thank Mr. Terry of the Renaissance Group for coming tonight and doing our presentation. I thought it was really good, thought, well-thought-out and, you know, I see your willingness to work with the group and provide what they need, so. Anyone else? Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item 11B passes four zero. Item 11C, Resolution 71-23, a resolution of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, designating items and materials as surplus and authorizing their disposal. Detective Reed?
We currently have a surplus of seven Taser Sevens and their accessories. We no longer use the Taser Sevens. And because of that surplus, Hickman has expressed that they would like to purchase them from us. And we believe that to be the most safe and effective manner of disposing of them.
Move for approval.
Second.
Questions from the board? Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Hall? Johnson, Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Thank you. Item 11C passes four zero. Item 11D, discussion, discussion regarding the perimeter trail bridge at Bowie Nature Park. Vice Mayor Butler? Butler? Lord, I can't talk.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I had the opportunity to attend the Parks and Landscaping Meeting last week, I believe. We had some good discussion about the perimeter trail and I had some good discussion with Mr. Schinkel, the current president of the Friends. And just wanted to bring this up for discussion to talk about what our plans are currently, where, where we're headed, what our options are and to try and get the bridge completed back out there. And I told Keith that happened tonight, too. If Keith can give us a current status update.
Currently, it's, it's, it's been a long time coming. I've been talking with Tom on this also, trying to get it to engineers. Currently, the city is very busy with our engineering firms. I was talking with Tom, city manager here, and we're looking to try to get it put on the amended budget for your guys' approval. You have any?
Is there, go ahead. Sorry, sir. Is there any alternative options where if we go over the smaller stream to the side with a smaller bridge or raised pavers or something that may not be as extensive or intrusive, something to give us a repair now or sooner?
I would be afraid if you put something in there that it's just going to get washed away with a, with the storm water that, that does come through there. It has, a lot of water has increased coming through there since, you know, don't want to really say it, but when Walmart was built, we do get a little extra water coming through there. So the, even the smaller storms that we are getting would probably rush that. I mean, we can try anything, but I, I would just be afraid to put something in there that's just going to get washed down the creek.
You got anything?
Yes, I've, we've talked about this several times and it, for lack of a better word, it, it's not been, it's been a priority, but not, not above some other things we've been working on within the city. But the best way I understand the history of it is our previous city planner said to have it taken down because it was unsafe. And I, I'm under, I'm understanding through talks with Keith that the river, the creek may raise, rise up to four feet in that area. So, you know, it's, it seems to me that if it's raining that hard, probably people don't be, need to be on the trail in the first place. But I think if we, if we go with this, we're going to have to get it high enough and get it out of the way of the water. I believe with some of the new building, some of the, the drainage has been channeled and it is, it is more of a flow through there. And I, I don't know if we want to go in, into those weeds at this time. But it is going to have to be a substantially higher bridge and it's, it's, it's going to have to be engineered to make sure it can handle and probably some studies, you know, that it can handle significant rainfall.
Is there a small stream that, that we could take an al, alternative path? Like, I guess to the northeast or so, is that right? Is there another route or is this the only route to go?
It's pretty much the route where the, the perimeter comes across the power lines.
And so the, the Friends have reached out and offered their, their help and any assistance as far as fundraising or helping find guidance or designers or engineers or anything. So just want to try and make, bring the discussion and try and shine a light on it and see what we can do to try and help move it along, you know?
My recommendation to, to Parks Director Paisley is that, you know, if it's something that, that we really want to put a priority on, we'll, we'll put it in amended budget and we'll, we'll get it done.
So is it going to be a $50,000 bridge, a hundred, I guess, you know, by the time we get the design?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't think that, but it will, we'll put a number in there and hopefully we can get something that is safe and no matter what the conditions are.
That's good. If there's alternative routes or anything, if we could just explore everything, we know engineers are expensive. We have several of them on, on contract right now, right?
When I took a tour, I'm just asking for location. When I took a tour of the perimeter trail first with Mr. Swinkle and then with you, Keith, when we got to that part where Bowie Lake Road comes in and there's the chain, it seemed like, and I understand if there's a big rain, that would be a problem, but it seemed like that was, you know, a lower part of the creek. And then I could tell where the bridge was before and the path that went up through the woods and back around. So if we're thinking about, because, you know, I understand where Vice Mayor Butler, you know, where, where he stands on this and, and what he's trying to accomplish, which is, I think it's a priority in my book. Where would that, where are you thinking that bridge might be? Would it be where you continue the path and go up into the trail that exists or maybe where it's more shallow?
Well, the, the one issue is because it is a little bit lower there, but it comes around that bend and because that used to be a driveway to a house that was back there. So they used to drive through there. So when that water comes around the bend, it's actually washing across that. So I think anything, and I've never seen it recently as, you know, back in the, even before the bridge was built, where it went that far up. There are possibly a couple other locations that we might be able to look at that might straighten it out, but would have to widen, make the trail on the upper side a little bit longer. Not 100% sure on that, though.
So initially, were you thinking about the deeper part? Well, when I say deeper, I don't mean deeper water. I mean, the bank is higher. I don't mean deeper water. I mean, the bank is higher, and it comes across, and then the bridge would be there, going to continue the path?
Yeah, it's possible. I mean, I wouldn't want anything that was, like, right on the power lines, like, right in any of the bends. So if it straightens out a little bit, as far as the creek river straightens out, we may not have the issue of the water coming up on the shore.
And that, what I was thinking is if the bridge, if we're going to have to go through the engineering and all of that, the... I know you know where I'm talking about. The banks are taller, so if we put a bridge there, then the rain would have to make the water go up pretty high before it would go over that bridge. So we wouldn't have a washout situation as much.
Right, and I mean, you could actually probably keep the same area if the bridge was maybe longer. Because one of the issues was where the bridge was, is that the shoreline is also getting washed away where the pillars, the concrete was poured and everything, it started washing out, that kind of stuff, because it's all bedrock right there. So if the bridge possibly was in the same location, but extended, but raised up, that may do it. But that's why we're saying it probably would be best to go to an engineering firm, just to get a good idea of what we're going to have to have done.
I believe, from a liability standpoint, it's no question. We do need to, if something happened, and we didn't do our due diligence, I don't want to put the city in that position. So I think getting it engineered, having a good, solid structure there is what, in our best interest.
So Vice Mayor Butler, I think we've heard Mr. Darty say that we're looking at an amended budget being heard the first meeting of January. Is that something that you?
I think that's fine. I've just been brought in. Mr. Schinkel from the Friends is here. If he has any commentary to add, or I'm welcome to bring it to us, but...
I'm happy to address any questions you all would like. Now, this tree, it's been out there for a while. I believe it was taken down for liability, as you pointed out, and as Keith just pointed out. I think it was taken down, or part of the issue is that pillar was in the water. What I've presented on and talked with the Parks and Landscaping Board, I see three scenarios with this as far as fixing it. The section that Keith has described, and you've described behind the chain, right?
Mm-hmm.
To me, you're not going to be out there if there's a torrential flood, but 95% of the time, think about just kind of a Frogger type of a model, if you had some steps in there that were a little bit higher, if you can put those in and anchor them down, you've created dry footing to go across there. Now, you can make an argument about liability around that kind of a structure. I can't speak to that in a legal way, but 95% of the time, that is going to cover the ability to cross that meaningfully. The second option, replace the bridge where it was. I think Keith's absolutely right. A longer span gets you coverage as far as what took that pillar out was wash, you know, big sticks basically, or stumps, whatever, washing down there. It just knocked the pillar over. The reason it knocked it over is because it's in the middle of the water, right? So longer expanse, you're good there. The third option that I see with it is off to the side of that cul-de-sac, might be what you were talking about as far as the northeast. I don't know the exact orientation there, but if you're coming down the cul-de-sac on the right, there is a smaller section of creek there. To me, I think about a little arched bridge. And again, how much and what do you want it used for? To me, it's strictly for the times after a heavy rain, for a couple of days until that water recedes. It gives people a way to get across there. You have people, you know, that are out there trying to run. They don't have footwear to get their feet wet. Little kids, that kind of stuff, right? Anybody that's engaged in genuine hiking will have waterproof footing, and 90% of the time can get across there. What I would point out right now, part of what's happening right now is, even though you may not have strict liability, people are makeshifting and putting sticks and stumps and all kinds of stuff right across that part, across the chain link right now. So even though you may not have strict liability with it, you got publicity and public image problems with liability that are just going to happen on an ongoing basis if you don't address it, right? From the Friends' standpoint, we are just that. We are friends of that park. We will help you raise money for it if you need it. We will help you raise labor if you need it. We'll help you raise donations for materials if you need it. We can't do any of that, and Mr. Hall was at one of our recent meetings where we talked about writing a grant. We can't do any of that without costs. Can't get costs without a design. So that is the only holdup in my mind at this point, is the ability for us to do any kind of help is really for you all to make the decision to press forward with something, and just get something done as far as a decision goes. Once the decision's made, we'll tell you what we can and can't do, and we'll certainly do everything we can to help if, as desired.
Both times I went on the perimeter trail, there was water. Is it dry right now, or is it?
So the way I would describe it, when you walk across, I walk that park every morning with my dogs. So that rock, that Keith described, the bedrock, there's a nice, flat shale section across there, right? There's probably about a three to four foot span where it just sort of ducks under, and it probably goes down about six inches. So that's what I mean. You could literally probably add two stones across that, and 90% of the time, people can walk across there, step on those two stones, and walk across there perfectly dry. They wouldn't really use the bridge much if those were there, is my suspicion.
I just know that both times that I toured it, it was wet.
Yeah.
And there were two people that were running the perimeter trail, and their shoes and socks were soaked, because you can't do the perimeter trail without crossing that creek.
No, and that is, the pragmatics, that, to me, that is, from a city image standpoint, anybody that's coming from outside of the city, or even within it, they go spend $100 on a pair of shoes, and they go out there, they got two choices. They either turn around, irritated that they can't use it, or they ruin $100-plus soda shoes as brand new, because we're not addressing, you know, something that it's relatively straightforward in a conceptual sense, right? There's a trail there, it's marked. Their complete thought is, why can't I use it? Why is this not being fixed, right?
Okay, so I guess another question is, we have money that's earmarked for Bowie Park. Can we not use that money to, since this, you know, is kind of important, can we not use that money to go ahead, before the amended budget?
I'm going to have to look. We've got $40,000 set aside for something. Well, I can't remember what that was, off the top of my head. I'll have to look. But we've, yeah, the money is not, not...
It's just a question.
My total thing is, is safety, is my main concern.
It's just a question. I don't, you know...
Yeah, regardless of how we fund it, I feel like it needs to go through a process, and I, any outside organization can, you can donate whatever funds to the city, time, this, that, and the other, but when it comes down to it, we're liable, you know, if somebody's injured because of our lack of providing a solid structure right there, I feel like it's going to be on us, but...
Well, and I'm not suggesting that at all. I'm just, I don't even know, I don't know if it's going to be $20,000 or $80,000, so I'm just kind of, maybe I guess what we should do is, you know, get a price first, and then see if we have money that's allotted for the Bowie Park in the budget.
Yeah, before I put any, if I needed to do a budget amendment, I'd have those numbers together before I did the amendment.
And if I can add there, I spent a little bit of time in civil engineering. I'm not a civil engineer by any stretch, but fundamentally, that is, to me, the chicken and the egg, right? You need to decide what kind of a bridge you want, what kind of a design, before you can call somebody out to give you the money on it. And that's been kind of the paradoxical circle that we've been stuck in, making the choice on what you want there. So one way to make that decision is to say, hey, what would it cost me? But the first thing an engineer is going to ask you is, what do you want?
Well, from a strictly legal perspective, you need to hire an engineer to go look at it and do the design for you, and then you'll know how much the design costs. And then if you have the money, then you build it. So it needs to be a design, design-build, where it's separated, not on a very small scale compared to what we're going to do with the fire station. So before we know whether we can afford it, we need to have an engineer go and look at the property, and then design it, and then price it, and then you can vote on the money to replace it, you know, if it's an aluminum bridge, or... What I would not do is put a couple stones to try to make it work now, because I think you'll end up with someone getting hurt or falling, and you'll have a real problem. Also add, I think any runner that won't get their sneakers dirty is not a real runner. So I'm one of the nuts that will go out in a torrential rainstorm and run in the woods, because I like being the only one out there, but...
Yeah, you've got little kids and family members hiking the perimeter trail. I mean...
Yeah, you need to have...
They're not out there.
You need to have the engineer look at it and price it for you.
So I guess this is on for discussion tonight. Do we want to add it for voting on it next meeting, as voting to allow engineering?
Yes, move forward with it. And I might, I've got something I'd like to add.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Schinkel and I have had some discussion on it also. Now that this could be done, that's the point in time, then you could apply for your grant that you was willing to do so.
We could.
Yeah, at that point, so...
Yeah, the other point of clarity, or suggestion I would make, I forget the gentleman's name on the Park and Landscape, is it, it might be Zach?
Zach Liston, yes.
Zach made a comment when we were talking during that discussion about the lumber company here locally. They might have an engineer on staff who would actually look at it for you and be able to give you input on that, just to get you moving forward. And they might willingly do that, just as a city partner.
Do they work on bridges?
They're supplying all of the folks that do those kinds of projects, so I think that's where the spirit of his suggestion was coming from. It makes sense to me that they could do that, if they've got somebody who's got an engineering background on staff. I just don't know definitively that that's the case.
And if not, we have engineers.
Yeah.
So... Is that what we're looking at?
Thank you, Mayor. I think that's good. We'll highlight it, and I think let it be known that it's a priority, and let's do what we got to do.
Okay, so we'll just, Rachel, if you'll just make a note, next agenda, which would be December 7th, we will add for vote to get pricing and engineering for the bridge at Bowie Park.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Item 11E, authorizing, the board authorizing the mayor to sign the site development agreement for Otter Creek Phases 3 and 4.
Move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Cavender, would you like to come forward? This, I mean, this is merely, you know, just a development agreement. It's already been approved, so...
This development agreement is for Otter Creek Phase 3, located at 7818 Old Nashville Road, map 42, parcel 78. The site development agreement is for Otter Creek Phase 3, consisting of 54 residential lots, lots numbered 51 through 83, and 94 through 114. This also addresses the bond amounts that were set by the planning commission for a site reclamation bond of $2,671,700, and a performance bond of $4,413,156. This site development agreement is a standard document that has been reviewed by our city attorney, and the only thing that has changed with this document from other ones is that the name for Otter Creek and their bond amounts have been placed in the document.
Thank you, Ethan. Anything from the board? Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Thank you. Item 11D passes 4-0. Item 12, roundtable mayor and commissioners. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to wish my youngest son, Reese, a happy birthday today. He's 14, and I had to leave and come to a meeting, but just wanted to tell him happy birthday.
That all? Okay. Commissioner Hall?
Just like to thank everybody that came out today, and which son is it, Stuart?
Reese.
Reese, that's what I thought. And happy birthday to Reese. I've known him since he was young. But I wanted to make sure that 14, I wasn't sure about that part. But anyway, thank you all for attending, and I think it was a very good meeting tonight. Appreciate it. Appreciate all the city employees, everything they do for us. Thanks again.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Thank you, Mayor. Happy Thanksgiving to all. Excited about seeing staff tomorrow for the lunch. Do we have, do we have a town hall on the 30th? Is that right?
We do.
Okay, just making sure. And then, thank you for recognizing the Titans tonight. I had two little cheerleaders in that group, so it was a special night for me, too. So thank you, guys.
Okay, we will not meet again before Thanksgiving. Even our town hall's after Thanksgiving, so I want to wish our community, everyone watching online, and everyone here, a happy Thanksgiving. Let's see. And as Vice Mayor Butler said, we have a town hall meeting. This is a month with a fifth Thursday. It's from 7:00 to 8:00 here at City Hall. If anybody from the community would like to come and just have some laid-back dialogue with us, and be able to, you know, just ask some questions, just please come out. I appreciate Coach Butler coming and talking about the traffic calming. I would like to just add to the agenda for next, December 7th, next meeting, discussion on relocation and placement of stop signs. Thank you to the Renaissance Group for coming out tonight and presenting their information and pictures and ideas about our future fire station. And I did want to say that Todd Bradshaw and our Public Works staff, they work really hard for us all throughout the night when we have storms. We're, you know, about to go into the season with snow, and we've just had a lot of graffiti going on. I really would ask the community if you see anyone painting signs, painting anything. I know that there's equipment on, you know, like, people building subdivisions that, I mean, expensive, two, $300,000 pieces of equipment that have been painted, spray painted. Our Public Works, they're having to stop their job, what they do for our community, and take care of these signs. We're upwards of, what, $5,000, $8,000 on replacement of signs? This is tax dollars. So we don't want our tax dollars going there. We want our tax dollars to go for good things for our community. So I just, you know, I would like to implore the people who are doing this graffiti to please stop. I have a heart for our community's cleanliness. I always say after every meeting, let's, you know, pick up trash and not throw out. So, you know, graffiti is another part of that. So if anyone in the community has any information on this, please reach out to our police department, and let's just, you know, please consider the cost and the look, and our children. Some of these, some of this graffiti is just, you know, children shouldn't have to see this. So I'm just asking, please, let's work together as a community to stop this. I think that's it for tonight. I think that's it for tonight, and thank you, guys, for coming out, and I hope to see you at town hall. And if not, our next meeting will be December 7. Thank you. I entertain a motion for adjournment.